Okay, we're gonna start up with the back metal height subdivision update.
Okay, we're gonna start up with the back metal height subdivision update.
Um, okay, so I spoke with, actually, I've spoken with two of the three property owners that are here. And the last time we spoke with the planning board, the board was on board with rolling back the paving standards for the road. And I'm not gonna go through the whole thing again. Um, the, so after talking with the town's attorney, uh, the, the issue that remains is the turnaround. So I talked to the fire chief and they went out there and they said, the turnaround that's been built, they were able to get the truck around. The problem is that the turnaround that was built falls outside of the private road that's on the plan. It was on the plan, if you remember, is a hammerhead style T turnaround. So what I spoke with, one of the things that I wanted to nail down with the attorney was what, like, how, um, how much could the town kind of back off and say, we understand that this is not the, uh, uh, an issue made by the residents and we want to work with them. Um, and essentially, what she said was, yeah, you can roll back those paving standards, but the, like, the fire safety issue is, is pretty, um, core and it's like, that's the town's, the town can't really back off of that too much. So, essentially, either the hammer, the, the turnaround needs to be built as designed and as approved and registered with the county, which is as a hammerhead, or the plan would need to be updated and to accommodate the round turnaround. The round turnaround may, I, I, I can't say that the way that it is built is up to, you know, uh, fire standard, the, the, um, the fire chief did express, like, if there was snow or whatever, it may still need some adjustments, but essentially, I think that the, I don't know, I won't say it's the easiest thing, but as of right now, I think that the, the planning board could, you know, review, could accept an application to amend the site plan that would remove the, or roll back the paving standard of the road, which is how this all started. We could do that, but the, the, the subdivision application would still not be completed. Conditions would not be met and there, and the, the real problem is then, um, uh, building applications couldn't be approved by the town until the, well, until that's done and until the, um, some kind of turnaround is built that meets the subdivision. So that's where that is. Um, I, I spoke with two of the property owners today and I'm gonna get in touch with the, and I have not had a chance to, get in touch with the, um, the original developer, Steel Bolt Construction and see what, where their head is at and all of this. Um, it's, it's some, I don't wanna like overstep as the town and say, you know, you, you have to, you will, you know, it's, at the end of the day, there, some of the, the sticks that the town has to make sure that, uh, applicants properly or do the things they are, are agree to do were kind of, you know, uh, taken, taken back. We didn't require the applicant to post a bond. Um, so there's, there's, you know, this is kind of a, maybe a little bit of a lesson in how not to manage all of this. So that's where that stands. We've got a couple of property owners, I don't know if they wanna, you know, be, be part of the conversation, but, um, that's where it stands and I'm hoping that, you know, I'm gonna talk to the property owners and see, and the original applicant and see what solution seems palatable there.
So, so the problem, so that the turnaround now will take a fire truck, and the fire chief, you know, has said it's okay.
Yes, he said it, a, a fire truck, a fire truck can turn around as it is now. The problem is it goes outside of the right of way and
So they would have to resurvey it.
Yeah, and would, if they wanna continue with a round turnaround, they would have to change the lot lines. Because the, what the issue is, the way that it is now, if a property owner that the, um, that the roundabout does go on to their property, if they want to, they could just put a fence up. And then the roundabout doesn't work anymore. There's nothing really anybody can say to them, oh, no, you can't do that.
If I can let my memory speak, as I served when this was done, it was not a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Because it infringes on the lots, which would make them substandard, which you couldn't have anything but standard lots to have the subdivision, and they requested a hammerhead because that would fit without infringing. So that's where we were at that time, which is why we approved the hammerhead.
It's because of the lot size.
Because a cul-de-sac would infringe.
Would have, yeah.
Which would make the lot substandard. They had to be two acres, I think.
I see. Well, so that is what was approved, was the hammer, the hammerhead.
And that's what I remember, why.
Right, okay.
You could have been, but you were quiet back then.
I was quiet, but I think I remember that.
So, so that, I mean, it also, it sounds like maybe amending the plan to accommodate a round turnaround is not something the board wants to entertain. There was, it sounds like there was a reason for it then. Um, so, basically, the, the item that's still out, well, the issue of the turnaround is, we need to, we need, we need to have, or the, the town's not gonna start issuing building permits until that T gets built the way the T was, the way that it was approved. So now that's, that and the, the paving seems like it's an issue that most everybody is like, okay with. Property owners are okay, if it doesn't get paved, that's fine. Um, the drainage, it doesn't seem to be an issue, but it was the, that fire turnaround was the one thing that the attorney said that we couldn't budge on, and that's what I'm gonna go back to the original developer and say, this was never completed. What do you want to do about that? So.
Certainly.
So, I, 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 I spoke
And you just come up there and say, yeah, that's
My name is Robert Chase, I'm one of the property owners in the development. And so I spoke to Xander Lee today, he's blissfully unaware of this situation. Supposedly, but he also said he had talked to his lawyer about it, and his lawyer said that it was, it was all said, he had no more responsibility to the, um, to, to the subdivision. So, I'm really having a hard time with this whole situation. I don't understand how one property owner was allowed to build a house and I can't have a building permit now at this point. Where, who is responsible for all of this stuff? I mean, who was on the board at this point? Who was supposed to be approving these things? Like, I, I've been, at to this point, I've been completely willing to just say, you know what, we've got to do what we gotta do. You know, it's annoyed about it. Now, I'm gonna have to hire attorneys, I'm gonna have to get and figure out exactly what happened, get to the bottom of this, who is responsible, and bring it to light, because this doesn't seem right to me. Something seems fishy.
So, so did the, who was responsible for building the road and the turnaround and the?
Xander Lee.
Xander Lee.
Well, the applicant was, Xander was, uh,
And, and he didn't, he didn't build, he decided not to build it?
Well, I don't, I don't know what he decided, but it was, it was not built. The road wasn't paved, the, the standards. And there were, there's, there are like kind of engineered drawings, um, for a road, for drainage. Um, like I said, there was a turnaround, T turnaround that was, that was on there and, and this all came up because when I went to see what, what was included about the original subdivision accepting this new subdivision as part of, it said in black and white, which I think I shared with the board, like, no building permit shall be issued until the road is paved, more or less. Um, and when we started asking, well, is, was it ever paved to those standards? We don't know what the standards are, and then we find out it was never paid, so clearly wasn't paid to those standards.
And I'm sure it said there had to be, well, a hammerhead, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's
And I don't know who decided to put a cul-de-sac at the end of the street when, on somebody else's private property, there's supposed to be a turnaround for the, for the, the fire department, where there's supposed to be a hammerhead there. That doesn't make any sense to me. Something is very, very strange. You can understand my frustration, I'm, I'm sure.
It seems like Xander Lee, town should talk to Xander Lee.
That's, I think, is, is appropriate.
I mean, I don't want, I, look, as far as I'm concerned, if we can do something with that hammerhead and then all of a sudden I can sell my lots, because I don't want anything to do with that subdivision or ever to purchase land in Damascata ever again, I'd be more than happy to just, just wash my hands of those situation, but I'll tell you, it's, something's not right.
There's no question, I agree with that, something is not right.
Something, something's weird.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, but we'll figure that out, I'm sure.
Anyway, so.
Next stop is Xander, alright.
Right, that's, I, I gotta get in touch with him.
Do you wanna go any further with this?
The conversation now?
Yeah.
Is, I, I mean, the next step is, I'm gonna try and follow up with, with Xander and, and see, it's, um, what I would say is, the, the, the recourse, the recourse the town usually has with these things, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things, I mentioned the, um, uh, usually you, you have a, a developer post a bond so that if they don't build sidewalks or put in the park or whatever it is, then the town just collects on the bond, does it themselves, but that was waived. Um, and the other thing is, you, in, in the, um, approval, it does say, you know, building permits can't be issued until whatever the conditions are, are met. The, the problem is that if the lots get sold, that kind of, that, the, the clawback kind of gets passed to, to the new property owners, so you don't get, like, if, if the property's already sold, now it's, it's not the original, it's not the applicant, original applicant's problem anymore. I mean, it can be, I think that, that this is a situation where the applicants might go back to the, to the applicant and be like, you know, what, what was, what was sold, how was it advertised, all of that? Um, but it, it gets hard because it's not, but like, that, I'm looking for a toehold to say, let's make this right and it's, my, my hands are, are tied, so to speak, in some, some ways. So, that's where that is.
There, there, there wouldn't be a, this wouldn't be a time for us to like, make a motion to waive the, the paving requirement, you know, or something like that, just to, to get rid of that off the table?
Well, um, so I, you know what, I, I would have loved to have brought that to the board. Um, the, the problem is, is that the, the board can't just unilaterally say, we wanna do this. It needs to be, there needs to be like an application from someone. I, I don't, don't have standing to, to do that, so. Um,
Yeah, we have to react to the state.
Yeah, exactly, there's
I mean, I think with the, the town attorney's involved in this, and until we can get that aligned out, I don't think it's wise for us to take any action on it this time.
That's, yeah. It, and that's the, that's part of it, is, planning board tends to be kind of a react, you know, it's quasi judicial, we can't, we're not going out trying to, we, I'm not on the planning board, but the planning board really isn't going out looking for issues. Code enforcement could, but there's not even really a violation right now, it's just a subdivision that wasn't completed. So, it, it, it tends to be in a weird situation like this where you're like pushing on a rope, kinda, so.
Uh, Aaron Ellis, forty-nine, this is Farm Lane, one of the owners. Um, so the town approved a construction loan for myself and my family, right?
Well, the town wouldn't approve the loan, but
No, not, not the loan, I'm sorry, the, uh,
But a, a permit.
A permit, correct, yeah. So, so we were allowed to proceed, invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in this property, and if I were needing, needing to sell that property today, I couldn't.
Yeah, that's, so that original building permit shouldn't have been issued. Now, I, I wasn't around, I don't know, I don't have any real record of this of like, oh, this was, you know, here's why it was issued, wasn't.
Right.
And this is where I asked the attorney, well, like, can we just, we just issue building permits up for this? No, because now we know, now the code enforcement, like, we know there's a problem, so if we just willingly ignore those requirements, those conditions, now it's, now it's a problem. It does put the town in a, in a weird spot because we've issued
Yeah, I mean, th- this could cause irreparable financial harm
Right.
to the families that have already built in that subdivision that was approved by the town.
Yes, yeah. And, well, and, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, talk to Xander.
That's what I'm
Okay, the next thing on the list, I'm, we'll do the minutes last.
Uh, and I, I will just say, um, I don't have the minutes on here, I meant to go through them and get them to you, but I just didn't have time.
We'll do them.
So, we'll have to do three meetings next week.
Fine. Okay, uh, on the new business, uh, Piper Mill Road Clipper Ship Landing Development.
Ready?
I'm ready, time you are.
Go ahead. Um, good evening, my name is Daniel McGuire and I'm with Sandy Ritter Company, um, with the developers of Clipper Ship Memory Care Facility. Um, we have a team of about five people here, I won't try to introduce them all because I'm sure I'll forget their names, but, um, we have our architects and engineers and my business partner, uh, Doug, as well as Andy, who's our, um, site planner, engineer, um, that submitted the application. Um, as you recall from our last meeting, we are going from a hundred and two bed nursing care facility to a seventy bed memory care assisted living facility. Um, our hundred and two bed, uh, facility, the permits are still in place, I think they're good until January, so we're, the way we're looking at it is we're amending our approvals, um, and downsizing the building, it's gonna go from roughly seventy-four thousand square feet to down to around fifty-eight or fifty-nine thousand square feet. Um, there'll be less traffic, you have a complete application that we've submitted, um, we certainly entertain the idea of doing a sidewalk, we also entertain the idea of voting on it tonight, that would be wishful thinking, but, um, anything we can do to answer questions and help you along, we'd be happy to do it. Um, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you folks.
Um, I think I shared with the board my draft findings of fact, there's still lots questions to go through. Um, essentially where, as far as I got through it was identifying most of the questions, what actually needs to be answered. The, so I'm, I'm happy to go through, you know, the
Let's go through it.
land use and, um, site plan review ordinance kind of item by where we can maybe make sense, and then if there's
They can answer some of the questions.
Yeah, and so, and I, and what I will say is, some of the questions are going to be, um, the applicants maybe need to provide some information or answer the question, and some of it is going to be, like, they're, the way the ordinances are written, it's it's kind of what is, I need to know what the planning board finds. Um, so, uh,
Before you take us through the whole nine yards.
Yes.
I view this as a request to amend, you know, their application which we approved. In essence, it's a smaller version of what we approved. So what I would like to hear, what are these? So what I would like to hear, what are the significant? Questions that make this. Different than the original. Application which was approved.
And I think that's essentially what needs to be answered. Um. The. Maybe because I didn't have the benefit of being here for the original review of the the project, what was submitted was. Essentially just this. There was a couple of drawings that showed a comparison between the original and this one, but for the most part, um. I don't believe there was a lot of information that was kind of comparing. Oh, it was this and now it's this as far as the technical speaking to the. Standards and the ordinance. Um, so the way that I did my review or the way that I've been doing my review was what's the standard, what's being proposed if. You know, we can, I'm I'm happy to hear, oh, well, it was approved. This is what was approved and. It's still the same. Now we can, then we can get into that. Um. But I think that that what you're saying, Wilder, is. Makes sense. It's if there was.
I'm a minimalist. Let's get to the facts. Answer those in the wrong.
Which.
Let's not go tread over old.
Yeah. No, and and what any fa- findings the planning board already made? I I would assume that you would make this consistent findings second time around.
We we did do due diligence.
Right.
On the first goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
I have one question. The subdivision of the parcel. Has that been completed? You know, have you? Is it now two parcels?
You go through subdivision review the first. You did. Okay. Great. Well, I'm. I'm I'm more than happy to not go through subdivision review again, because that's already been recorded.
We didn't submit it, sorry. You probably know who I am already. Uh, I'm Eddie Johnston from Atlantic Resource Consultants. So I'm the engineer for this project. So I can answer some of those questions. The plan was recorded. We didn't submit it with this, but it's referenced in the application and we and we have the lot line shown on the application. It's two separate lots. And we can certainly provide a copy of that uh, recorded plan with the stamp on it, if you want to see that.
Yeah, it's kind of. A crazy. Shape.
Well, it is until you see if until you see overlaid on the site plan, because there's a shared access driveway and it basically runs along. The east side of the shared access driveway. So it's it's a little complicated, but there's a number of reasons it looks like.
Just trying to think the. Maybe the first. Question that needs to be answered by the planning board is, I guess, maybe you can set this up, um. What was the? What's the use that was approved? And what's the use that? What's the the new use? And I guess maybe we I should pose that in um. In the context of. I believe of the current use falls under. Says in that cool land use ordinance because it is a mouthful and it's pretty broad and I'm assuming it's probably falls within that again, but. That's what the. See. Oh, um, here it is. Okay, so in the schedule of land uses. The the land use. Congregate care and independent living facilities, assisted assisted living facilities, institutions or services with the disabled. Nursing care facilities, residential care facilities, group care facilities. That's just one use that's listed on the land use table. Uh, that is listed as a conditional use. I believe that's what was how this was reviewed the first time. And. What was what was the? Maybe can you speak a little bit to like what the specifics of the use were the first time and what's different? And then maybe the board can consider. Is this essentially the they both fall under this use?
I mean, that that piece of property is zoned as you just described it. In fact, we were involved working with a prior um. Town planner and the town um, defining exactly what assisted living meant mend as well as nursing care. Um, the first project was licensed nursing care, which is ineligible use. Um, or conditional use, I believe. Um, we're now doing assisted living, assisted living still. Uh, is a licensing category with the state of Maine, whether it's nursing care or assisted living, um. So it's.
It's it's not medical, though. That's the main difference. The first one was more medical.
Definitely, definitely more medical. The other one's more about memory care and assisted assisted living as you'd expect assisted living to be.
Well.
But it's still both eligible uses for that for that zone.
Um. I just, I think that that making sure that we nailed that down will. So I get I I'll read this. I'll read you the definition here. It says congregant care and independent living is defined, which is not exactly what's in the land use table, but I. Believe it's that. It is this this use and says a residential facility that is primarily engaged in providing residential and personal care services for the elderly and or other persons. Who are unable to or do not desire to live independently. The care typically includes room, board, supervision. And assistance with activities of daily living, such as housekeeping, transportation, meal service, and other specialized. Specialized services such as medical support and physical therapy. These services may be provided in private apartments or multiple tenant rooms with community spaces and common dining areas. So. Just want to make sure. That. The proposed use. Fits that. But the original, the the previously approved use fits that, because if it if this is a different use than a. Well, if it is the same use, it kind of saves a lot of. I don't know. Discussion.
Other than, you know, being very picky and even as picky as you want to be. We went through very long discussion about Nelson Norman, what that meant. My layman's term is you're taking care of all people. That's what it was. That's what it is.
Right.
So. Refresh my memory. Isn't there? There is a forty five unit. Limit.
I think it was.
For for resident for for um. Senior living. Residences, but this is not, these aren't residences. These are just.
Well, I so I think that that probably is isn't is. Relevant and we can discuss that, but before we get to that. Um, I think that I just want to. To make sure that that the planning board's all on the same page and says, yes, this is this is what the use is. Um, now, if the planning board thinks that this is a a different use, and that's a totally different conversation, we we'd have to have that conversation, but I think the. Um. You know, and and doesn't necessarily need to be. You don't need to decide it right now, but I just want to. You know, bring up any issues around this. And and what I will say is, just because the. Specifics around the details here around the use are might be a little bit different. If it. Falls within the congregation care and independent living facilities use category. All right, um, then the then the use isn't changing and they're not looking to establish a new use there. I mean. They're already permitted to establish that use. So if it's a different use, then we have to have that conversation. We do we are, is this allowed here? Is this what it is? Um. But you can imagine like. Uh. Fast food restaurant, if that was a permitted use. You know, maybe uh, Chipotle may be very different than McDonald's and it's like, but they're still they're still fast food. They're still in the same kind of category, even though they do. You know, one's fast casual and one's fast. I don't know, you know, whatever the differences. Is that clear and fair? I just want to establish that. And if there's thoughts that the planning board has. Or wants to discuss. Um, and and the reason I want to nail that down is because then to your question. Of what are the limits of? Kind of need to know what the use is before we start diving into what are the limits and regulations on the use. Um.
I think it falls under the congregation care.
Okay.
Sure.
So. And. Okay, so that's a.
The only difference is that it's. The other facility had more medical aspects to it. And required more medical staff and it was. It was a medical facility.
More medical, right?
And this is not. But I don't think that. Change it. That's not really. Addressed in the in the ordinance.
In that definition.
In that definition.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't, it wouldn't seem, if I'm understanding what you're saying, it doesn't seem to pull it out of that use. Um.
I mean, they're. They're both licensed by the state of Maine. One is licensed as a nursing care facility. One's licensed as assisted living. In this case, it's. Really a P and M I facility, which is private, non-medical institution. It's really a payment category. That's. That, you know, that's what we're concerned. Oftentimes in our buildings, we'll have units that are nursing and we'll have a. A residential care or assisted living unit right next to it. And sometimes they change, then switch back and forth. So they're really, it's the same use, really, just it's and it's all. Um, bedrooms. It's not, you know, living and dwelling units. You don't have kitchens in in our buildings. For the most part, it's all private rooms. We're gonna have some shared rooms uh, in this project. Um, but it's really a licensing category and we're pretty careful when we worked with you folks before. When you're really like writing your zoning ordinance, make sure we had it all covered. I think I think we're good, but.
That's and I just want to make sure that we establish that.
I understand. It is complicated. It's complicated for us some days.
Right, well. And the way that one ordinance defines something in another ordinance or the ways defined in the medical field versus land uses, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, it's a different license with different requirements around that license based on the level of care that we're providing.
Yeah.
Different staffing patterns, different.
You're saying what's being proposed now versus what? Was. But I think. The the point that I've just tried to establish or that I want to make sure the the board nails down is. If it is it, if it still falls under congregation care and independent living facilities, then. Great, then that's the the then we're essentially they're not amending the use. Is what is what I want to. Get to, right? That's not, that's not the thing that's being amended in this application.
Mike, can I have a question? Before we get too deep into this, I recuse myself from the last meeting on this, the last vote rather. And I plan to do the same thing this time, so I think it'd be in the board's best interest if we bring Danny in as a a voting member for this project. Um, just so that there's no conflict either way. So he's on board for the whole project.
Yeah, I mean, I will say something about that. I've I've thought about what you're saying and um. This project is not being done with Lincoln Health.
It it's not, but I look at it from the from the town's point of view where I recuse myself from the last time. I work for the competitor that does the same type of business that you're proposing here tonight. And I just don't want that there's any conflict whatsoever of. You didn't vote that way for whatever. I just, I don't want to put the town or your project at jeopardy for that. So I think the best. Solution for everybody is that I just recuse myself. We have an alternate that can step in keeping us a five member board. Um, and then it's, there's no question.
We support that. We're good for whatever you think is best.
So if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
It is.
I make a motion that we substitute.
Go in favor.
Danny, I gotta pack it for you already, buddy.
Pay close attention, Dan.
Um, okay, that's um. That is. Good, because the the reason I brought all of that up was. Conditional use standards, which. It it this really isn't a conditional use. Well, it is a conditional use, but. We don't need to reestablish. The use. Um. There are, I have a couple questions and and it may have been included in the the packet, um, you know, all the information you gave, there's quite a bit there, so. Um. I I'm just going through this kind of in order of how it shows up in my ordinances. Um. One, the the. Basically, what I would like to know is what the. How far the I need to know the setbacks, the front, side and rear setbacks. From. For the for the building. Have no reason to suspect that they don't meet it, but I just want to have those specific numbers. I don't necessarily need them right now. I'm happy to follow up with you after this, but that's I'm just, I I'm just gonna go through and highlight whatever's outstanding.
Yeah, absolutely. We can certainly show that in the plan. We can know.
Yes, I I, okay, so some of this I don't think is gonna necessarily warrant a discussion, but I want to identify it. And then there are some things that I'm I'm. Imagine will. Need discussion. Um. The frontage uh, is. Being measured along Piper Mill Road. Uh, not measured along School Street, which I think is how was originally was. Determined. And I say that, um. Because there are some standards that only apply to public streets. Uh, and then there are other standards that apply to just generally roads. At all, but I want to make sure we nail that down. I know that and I I know that came up originally. Um. So. That's that's how that is. And I and I just, that's a a number I'm gonna. Need that frontage. Um. One of the things I need the board or the board's gonna have to find is that. The question is, is adequate off-street parking provided for residents, guests and employees? Um. And I'm I'm assuming all the parking spaces are nine by twenty or nine by eighteen or something. That's in in site plan, it does. And land use, it's nine by twenty, but I think we can, as long as you're meeting one of them, we can probably make that um, work. Um. Uh, I one of the standards is to confirm that there's um, nothing other than essential utilities, access and stormwater in the buffer yard. Do you have correspondence with? Natural resource agencies that uh, indicate that no specific impact to significant wildlife habitat or rare botanical features. Are anticipated?
Yes, and we didn't resubmit that because we submitted it all the first time.
Okay.
And it all also went in with the D P application.
Okay. And that's.
So they're asking for a waiver about the buff- buffer yard, right?
And that, um, I will be getting to shortly. And so some of this is. You've already submitted it, but again, I. I I not having the benefit of like, oh, yeah, I remember seeing all of this. Um, I'm just going through kind of everything. So if the board's already determined that, you know, you've you meant that with the first one and. That hasn't changed, then. Great. Um. I'm not sure if the board. Discussed this, I I guess I would assume, yes, the building's not that different, but did the structures relate harmoniously to the terrain and nearby existing buildings? I would say there aren't really a whole lot of nearby existing buildings, but. That is a standard in here.
You can see it completely from the site from School Street.
School, yes, and there were. Who sent me some pictures today? So you, was that you? Yes, uh, that I saw and and I haven't shared it with the board yet, but. We can, they've got rings of what you might be able to see from from School Street.
By by taking off one of the arms. You know, you've kind of pushed the mass of the building back.
It's actually gone quite a long way back and it's also a smaller footprint. So the ends of the wings that you're seeing have got. Further away from School Street and got smaller.
Yeah, it it.
We have some visuals to show you on that. And actually, it's the other thing that plays into that is. Uh, you know, I drove by. This afternoon and went up School Street is that area that used to be, and you may remember from the sidewalks. I think everyone here was at Sidewalk last year. Used to be, I see right across there and it's kind of a meadow behind where that big tree is. That is all now. This high. So you can barely see it. When you look over from School Street now. The view is not really of a meadow. It's more of a grown in brush. Landscape around that tree. So it's gonna be even less visible from School Street. Both because it's like growing in and because it's further back and it's small.
Do you do you have a poster of like the original site plan in the?
I do.
Just comparison, just quick to.
That's the, that's the easiest way to visualize this, so. You're good. So this shows in red, it shows the original development. And I highlighted it. This was, this was the access road. Yeah. This was the previously approved building. With the wings coming out substantially, obviously substantially longer. And this is the obviously in color. And shaded here is the new layout. So it's all been brought back this way. And the easiest way to visualize that, if you look, if you look from School Street or you go out to the site, there's a big tree right about there. And we were gonna have to take that down because it was clo- it was between the building and the fire lane last time. We can save that now. So we're inside that tree. So if you look from School Street by the by the building, I think it's the gym building or the. The white. Um. The white buildings on School Street. If you look by that now, you can see, you can see dead ahead. You can see where the tree is. So we're not touching anything, the school street side of that tree.
What's the distance that you moved from the highlighted yellow back to your shaded gray?
This is about a hundred and twenty. This is about a hundred and twenty feet.
Hundred and twenty feet further back.
That's substantial.
What doesn't show on here cuz I just put the road on there, it's obviously pushing the road out that far, the grade in went out further than that. And because this is closer to grade, the gradient's pitching in as well, so. You know, if I were to draw the limit disturbance on here, it would have been out here and now it's gonna be right tight to that road.
That's good.
Anyway, just sharing some personal observation. When you're driving north to south on the street. If you go on the speed limit. My head will not turn enough to see that lot. Coming from south to north. Again, along the speed limit. There's only a couple of spots that you may be able to see that. That was a year ago. How the trees have grown. I will say the only people who can see this line would be walkers or bicycle people. Well, people live in there, but there's only one house on the left side of, you know, high street that sort of faces in that direction.
So do what I did this afternoon, you have to stop on the side of the road to be able to look downside the house, we have to see it. Cuz there's, you know, between, between the frothies there is pretty substantial vegetation, so it's narrow gap.
I, I wouldn't think that this, this, the standard is that, that building is just not visible from anywhere. It's, you know, is it?
Buffered.
Yeah.
Yeah, and is it um, kind of, I don't know, not harmonious, however you want to define that. Being able to see a building isn't terrible. Is there shadow? Is it imposing? Is it, there's other things, but seeing it I would think is, but, okay. Uh, proposed right in the world just here, they're over, uh, yeah, so this is gonna be over three acres. Does, does this result in more than fifty percent impervious coverage on the lot?
Have we considered using any different types of paving for the fire lane?
Uh, what we have, so. And this is one where we, we try to do that where we can, but we've gotta maintain some degree of pavement that makes it comfortable for the fire department. So we actually discussed that last time. So from this point onwards, this fire lane around here is actually twelve foot paved. And then we have reinforced turf on the outsides. And that's what we did the last time. We agreed it with the fire chief. He, he by code, he needs sixteen feet, like the NFPA for a warmway fire lane, it's sixteen feet. He's gotta turn around there, which we've done the turning template and we showed that to him last time. But that's as much as, we would love to pinch it in more. But he has to still be comfortable, his wheels are running on pavement and he's got enough room. You know, if it's not the best guy driving the fire truck, you know.
Well, no, it's just, there's a apartment building, you know, the apartment building that we just approved, they were, they had a green.
Yeah, well, it sounds like that.
So these, the dash lines here are green, it's grass, grass goes in the grass papers.
Okay, grass papers.
Yeah, so it narrows it down as much as you can. But, but you still have to delimit the area where it gets plowed and it gets clear, it's all everybody's comfortable with, that you got that width.
You, what, what do you call it? Reinfor, reinforced turf?
Reinforced turf is a geo-block product and you put, you put gravel underneath it like a road. You put about three inches of topsoil and there's like a, a hydrogel stuff that keeps the moisture in there and it lets the grass grow. So if you don't run on them, they grow grass pretty well. And typically the fire lanes, people don't run them. You could, you could drive your fire truck down that twelve foot, turn around without touching the edges. But it gives you, the extra bit gives you enough room, then if you're not quite on it, you could still make it.
It sounds like a similar, I mean, not a paved area, but the.
Correct.
Yeah, but.
Reinforced turf is similar to what's at the other.
Yeah, they're, they're using it for the entire.
Yeah, I mean, that's different, different, different building, different, different standards. Um, okay. Okay, so the application proposes retaining natural buffers in excess of thirty feet along the rear and sides of the lot. Except along the eastern side, which is the waiver request. I won't read the whole uh, waiver request, but where. That was the eastern side of the lot, can you, I guess, explain that request?
This explains subdivision line. Uh, so that subdivision line runs around the edge of this access road. So this lot is being retained for future development. So the reason for that, um, minimizing the buffer around here is this, in the future will be a shared access driveway. So that's one of the things you're allowed to do on the buffer, is put shared access. It's the only way reasonably a shared access could run, because we have all these wetlands down here. So if, if you wanted to access this from pipe, from further up Piper Mill Road and extend the width of the pavement here. You'd be into a tremendous amount of wetland impact down here. So we have this uh, share, what's gonna be a shared access driveway at the moment is served as a fire lane. It's tw, this one's twenty-two feet wide all the way around to, to here. Um, and that and the stormwater and the fact that, that this is a, this will be. In place, in effect, subdivision is already in place now. So any future developer of this land, and it's very likely to be something that's done in conjunction with this. Uh, maybe age restricted apartments or something that people could potentially live in while their relatives are in the memory care. So it'll be a very similar, certainly a very uh, cooperative use to this use. And it's the best way to develop the property and it minimizes the wetland impact. And as I say, once this, this is all in place, this is, this is a pre-existing condition then for anybody. Who wants to move in here, they know it's already in, in existence.
So. I, I have a question, but does the board have any?
So, so. The same person on both, does the same group own both parcels?
Moment, yes.
But the, but the plan is to spin off that parcel.
And it may be either an ownership entity that is related to the current one. Uh, that's most likely scenario, right? So we, and, and just to, just to expand a little bit on that. Is you'll see all these plans with stubbing utilities down this way.
And you're using some of the, the drainage is going into engineered wetlands.
Yeah, these, these are fire retention cells, yeah.
Yeah, on, on the other person.
Correct.
So.
If that lot were ever transferred, then there would be an easement here. And obviously if it was ever transferred, there'd be an easement over the road to allow this entity to access the site.
So do we have to include that easement or the condition of that easement?
You'd only need it if this was sold to another party.
Okay.
And it's not at the moment. So if that, you know, if that came to, into being, they would need an easement to access the utilities to access the road. And suddenly the other way around for the stormwater beaches.
And does, where's the property line that's for the, that second? And then. And then just a little bit further east from there, like the east side of that property line is, is that Coastal Rivers that owns that? Interesting. So uh, the intention is that, that what is now a water lane would potentially turn into back to drive entryway for.
Correct.
Other. Um, I will. I will take a look and see um, what findings the board might need to make to grant that waiver, but. Generally, um, in effect, that's what's being requested. Oh, that was, that was part of the.
And if I told you, it's the same as all.
As it was already there.
We don't, we've put it in because technically if you re-approved it, we still, I think, we still have to go through the waiver approval process.
Yep, okay. Well, maybe it's an amendment, I don't know, well, look at it, but.
I was gonna skip to parking, but.
No, let's go through.
Is there any reason why there'd be any impact to air quality? My, my assumption is that it's not like you have, I, I guess maybe the only real question is how are you heating the building or? You know?
Hi, Rebecca Dillon from GTD Architects, same system as we were using before. The R F air system.
And is, is that uh, what, gas, like propane or uh, not? I, I assumed there wasn't, I just wanted to. Make sure. Okay, the next thing on here is lighting and glare. The. Is, i- is there any real difference between what the lighting that's being proposed, I imagine location, but are fixtures different or heights or anything like that different?
I think from, from my recollection session, they're all the same, they're just further back.
They're just moved and, and, okay. Re. Um, I assume there's nothing rotating or flashing? Uh, photometrics plan was provided, okay. I'll have, I'm, I'll go through that. I haven't had a chance to go through the specifics of it.
Is that in this book?
Yes, it is.
It is in here?
Yeah.
Should be section fourteen, I think. Yep.
And it's one of these things that you see in the book, cuz I know that when we printed eleven by seventeen. If you need bigger copies of that, so, of, of course, Michael has it electronically.
Yeah.
Sometimes they get a little difficult to read.
And I think I did share this electronic version with everybody, so you should have. You should have it. I assume there's no update since what you shared with me.
All right.
Basically net zero all the way around.
All right, noise is the next thing. I'm assuming there's not gonna be any change in noise, probably less, less. Okay.
Pretend to leave all, I'm not gonna skip, you keep on. You just talk, I'm not skipping, I'm not gonna do any of that.
Anything about noise? Um, the, the, the next thing is adequacy of the public road system. Uh, is there adequate capacity to accommodate the M D O T level of service process? Now. What process did you all go through for the review for the, the last? I knew you have a traffic study in here, which I haven't reviewed yet, but.
It is a D O T traffic study. We had a discussion over it being a private road actually owned by the applicant.
They own it.
They own it.
Right.
Correct, and you'll see in the traffic assessment, which mimics the traffic assessment we gave you the last time. Only the traffic's come down in proportion with the buildings and the traffic's about a third less. And it was a pretty low traffic generated, very, very low traffic generated in these ten to fifty. Anyway, uh, so it's a third less of low. We did look and get some of those key areas that we were asked, we not specifically associated with this project. But some issues that you have in this, in the area of the site, more town road related issues and side distance issues. So we looked at those again and the summary of those in the traffic impact assessment. The one thing that I will, I will bring up, which is interesting more than, more than really relevant. Um, but when you look at the intersection with uh, right opposite here. With Business Route One and School Street, which was previously flagged as a high crash location, it's no longer a high crash location. And the reason for that is because D O T measures that on a three-year schedule. And the previous crash that was there fell out of the three-year schedule this time around. So it's no longer a high crash location. Our understanding is that the previous no-left turn improvements. That were proposed by D O T were not viewed very favorably in town and they are not intending to install those now.
I don't, there was no public discussion. I don't know, maybe the selectmen did, but there was no like town meeting or anything.
And that's, and that's just. Need from the region two traffic engineer at D O T. There are a couple of things that you could still possibly look at that we looked at previously. One is the street markings at Bristol Road and School Street, which I came up there today and I'm like, there's no stop bar by the stop sign. The chevrons in the middle are just two lines and they're not striped, so that was a recommendation last time around. Coming out of High Street onto School Street, we actually measured the side distance and it meets the side distance from the speed limit. There is a mailbox there, I think it's from one fourteen or one sixteen, whatever the house is on the opposite side. Uh, schools been, they've got one of those big chunky mailboxes and it sits right in the side, sightline should come in out of that. Uh, at a High Street, so a little vegetation trimming and potentially relocating that mailbox should solve that issue. And again, you may recall that discussion last time around. If the town still thinks that they have a speed issue or a safety issue there. The traffic engineer recommended town could always decide to put a four-way stop in there, which will.
Right.
Slowly way down.
You're talking four-way stop at High and Piper. Okay. That was um, I guess one of the things in here. This is a question for the board, is will the applicant be required to make improvements to bring the level of service to? Whatever the standard is, I guess that's possibly, well, we can kind of review what the findings are and discuss that. You know, possibly four-way stop, things like that.
But that, but isn't that the, the town and the state? I mean, it's on a public road.
It is.
Not, not, not continuous with this property.
And just to clarify that, the level of service issue is, so D O T, in fact, nationally. Level of service is defined, defined by the queuing time at the intersections, how long you're waiting at an intersection during peak traffic hours. So putting a stop sign in is neither here nor there, as far as that goes. And there are no intersections that the traffic engineer identified that don't currently meet the required level of service.
Yeah.
Which is not unexpected. We, you, you're talking about queuing ones that go into thirty seconds and a minute at a time, you know, and backing up traffic. It's, it's more associated, pretty highly congested here. Not to say it doesn't get congested here at times, but.
Right, right, yeah, I, that's, okay, I just wanted to, to. To raise that, the part, the, the standards that are in there are a little bit. Easy goosey, but um, I just wanna bring it up and see if there was issues at the planning board. Had. Um, all right, so the next thing was uh, access to the site. Uh, vehicular access to and from the development must be safe and appropriate. This was the one thing I wanted to discuss with, uh, or one of the things I wanted to discuss with the planning board was. Access from High onto Piper and from Piper Mills onto the site, really. You know, are there, I guess the, the planning board would probably have to find that the proposed access is safe and appropriate. I don't know if there are concerns there, we'll discuss them now, otherwise we can move on, but.
The site distances are fine.
That's, yeah, that's, I think.
It's access off from Piper Mill into the site itself. I mean, it's gonna, it, it looks like a good plan to me. Driveways are separated out, wide. Roads widen up presently, but. So it's back to sidewalks.
It's a private road to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, and they've already um, moved the lot, the project back further. So it used, the, the entrance to the driveway used to come out just above the guardrail. Which now if they're moving that back, I think it's down probably another fifty, seventy-five feet on, almost across from. The other place. I mean, it's, the line of sight improved by just doing that.
It really did, and that, that, you may recall the last one, the service entrance, which is the one furthest down the road. Um, evidence and primitive of the vegetation on the inside. We don't need to do that anymore cuz we brought that driveway back and leaves the site without touching any of that.
Yeah, I don't believe.
And, and the, the entrance is right across from Ledgewood, right? And, and the, the entrance is right across from Ledgewood, right?
Yeah, the main entrance is right across from Ledgewood, and then the second entrance is right opposite the ambulance. Place now, it used to be a little further down, it was that.
Yeah.
Um, I assume the site, or the site distances provided, like the specific number of. Okay. Great, um.
Do you intend to carry that sidewalk up to school street?
Uh, well, we were to show that we could fill the sidewalk down to Golden Street. Um, on the plans, and there was some discussion last time, that who was gonna do that and when it was gonna be done, and that's, that's actually an interesting question. Between the applicant, planning board and town, we had some reservations and, and still doing about bringing a sidewalk down. To School Street and dumping people to a place where there's no sidewalk currently, so it would be. In our view, it would be more sensible to perhaps put money aside to do that. When there is a connection in place, and I know the town, the last time I went through the process, the town had a plan to extend sidewalks along School Street or up High Street. Or maybe a combination of the two, but I can't remember, but we. And generally speaking, we have some reservations about sidewalks that go nowhere, because you're telling people you can walk alongside the road safely, and then you're putting them in a place where they can't, so.
But there's already people walking along that road all the time.
Right.
And, and what we've found is that when people put money in a fund, we've done it with several projects around here, the sidewalk never gets built. That has happened.
So I think that's, that's just a point for discussion.
But I, it is a, it is a thing.
Right.
But also Jenny, once again, it's, it's not a public road, it's a private road. You know, so how do you deal with that?
Well, do we specifically say only along the sidewalk requirement is only along public roads?
Not necessarily, but.
I think you have to look too, because I think it was part of the last application, so we just gotta clarify how much of that was in there, yeah.
But I'm skipping again, so I'm sorry.
No, I.
I had me looking at the entrances and sidewalk part that.
Yeah, that, and that, that is somewhere, I, I remember seeing that, um. All right, um, the next thing that I've got, I'm sure we'll come back to that, but, um. Any reason to expect that more than thirty percent of the vehicles using the driveways are going to be larger than pickup trucks?
No.
Is that? I, I assumed, no, um. As. Okay, and you can meet the site distances, so that's not relevant. Um.
They did have figures last time about how many, um, service vehicles, I mean, like a food service and. Delivery trucks and stuff like that, that's probably all in there still. You know?
Yes, if it isn't, we can provide that, what we.
But it was kind of surprising that there was so much, but. Whatever. I mean, there are a lot of.
It'll be non-passenger vehicles, whatever.
And it would be fewer than what was originally proposed.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be thirty percent.
Uh, no, okay, that's a, other, there's some standards that kick in if it's more than thirty percent. So, my assumption was no, but. Um. Um. Okay, so I had in here that confirmed that the second driveway was only one way, but I'm. Seeing, and I think both driveways are in and out.
Yes.
So. And did you have two driveways in the original? Okay, and so that was proved that way, um, just because there's, it says no use shall have more than one two-way driveway. Onto a single road, roadway unless traffic engineer demonstrates the second access is required for traffic safety.
So it really is, so, so this is down to, and, and we come across this in, in, not just on this type of use, but in all sorts of different uses in schools, and there, there's. There's really clear data that's separating traffic streams in harm to safety, so people, for example, who are driving passenger cars. Um, particularly when they're going to see. Love the ones in a facility, you know, even if they're staff in the facility, compared to professional drivers, if you can separate out. Both the types of vehicle and the causes for those vehicles to making trips, it results in enhanced safety. So we try and do that, not just on these projects, but say on school projects, on a number of different institutional. Projects, we're always trying to separate those traffic streams, so that's the reason to have a separate service center.
Okay, and is that addressed in the application somewhere, or could it be?
We can certainly provide you some information on that.
Yeah, that's. Then I think we, I, if you can address that standard, then that would be good, um. Are the, I, I have a note here, I will double check, I think it came from the same, uh. Sections as any driveway must be no greater than thirty feet wide, um. The board may permit an additional driveway if necessary to come, yeah, so, or how wide are those two driveways separately?
Twenty-four and one's twenty.
Okay, so that shouldn't be an issue. Um, yeah. No use which generates one hundred or more vehicle trips per day shall have more. More. You know how many, it says, okay, here's a standard, no use which generates one hundred or more vehicle trips per day shall have more than two points of access to a single roadway. Uh, it doesn't say private roadway, but I, do, do you know how many vehicle trips a day you're generating? And. You can also just provide that, you know, later, but.
Yeah, actually, it helps.
It's generated a weekday, two hundred and fourteen.
Okay, so that will have to address somehow.
How did, come on, freshly, how does that stand?
It says no more than two.
Says no use which generates one hundred or more vehicle trips per day shall have more than two points of access onto a single roadway, so then there's two, and I think that should be fine, okay.
So. But so then this facility will require fewer employees, right, like, so it's, it's down from.
I think we said, uh, fifty-five, Monday through Friday on the day shift will probably be in the neighborhood of thirty or so. Monday through Friday on the day shift, that'll be the highest peak, that'll be the peak.
Alright.
That's at like shift change.
Yeah, seven to three, seven, that's seven to three period of time.
Okay, oh, during, yeah, okay.
Staff in, in-house staff.
Um. The board is gonna have to find that the proposed parking provides safe, convenient and official, uh, and efficient vehicle and pedestrian access. And. Another standard is that the parking shall be distributed around large buildings in order to shorten the distance to other buildings and public sidewalks and reduce the overall scale of the paved surface, so. That first one's a little bit. Mushy, um. And it's other standard of distributing the parking around the building. Thoughts?
Something to mention with that, you should have thought ahead, there's only one parking lot. In the entrance. They're not gonna park out back.
No, I, I, not, not, uh, arguing whether or not it's a good standard, just that it is a standard, um. All right, a lot to. Think about that, um. Okay, the, are the parking lots located between the front facade and the principal building and primary abutting streets, this is. The, this part says in no case shall parking lots be located between the front facade of the principal building and the primary abutting streets. And I'm just gonna read this verbatim, because it's a little bit. Unclear, but, um. Yeah, so in no case shall parking lots be located between the front facade of the principal buildings and primary abutting streets unless the planning board. And the parking area is screened from view from the frontage street based upon affirmative showing by the applicant. Based on clear and convincing evidence, in which case the building and parking areas must be screened by appropriate landscaping. From the frontage streets in a manner agreed by the applicant and the town's consultants and planners.
And they've left a huge buffer.
Yeah, so.
And that's a natural buffer that you guys.
Yeah, it's a natural, yeah, so it's, it's a big, it's gonna be screened somewhat.
Definitely had a group of aliens who wanted everybody to back out back.
And so.
I don't know if those aliens still live here or not.
Primary abutting streets, okay, and then, so there's, basically the, I think the, the question that needs to be answered by the. Board is, is the parking area screened from view from the frontage street based upon an affirmative showing? By the applicant based on clear and convincing evidence, so is it screened from view, um, and. Seems like you're saying yes, but you want to discuss.
Not taking down all the trees there, I mean.
No, in fact, there's, there's, there's a weapon runs through that tree there here, and you, you probably recall this came up the last time. Um. And so this is at sixty feet. So this is about a hundred feet of trees that are staying in, in here, and it's pretty, as you recall, we'll probably go walk the site again, is my guess, but it's pretty thick.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
And of course, the alternative would be to move things back, we don't want to do that, because then it starts to become more visible from school street.
So I think the question was. Is the building and parking area screened by appropriate landscaping from the frontage street? Seems like everybody's comfortable with that, um. Uh. Parking lot shall be set back a minimum of fifteen feet from the lot line along non-fronted streets, seems like that's, you're not anywhere near fifteen feet from them. Um, okay, for, this is for parking, does, demonstrate safe and efficient movement. Uh, does the design show? Parking arrangements flow in separation for vehicles and pedestrians and designated service loading areas. I believe you do have serviced the designated service and loading areas.
Yes, and that, that's exactly what I was talking about, the need for the service drive, so all the service vehicles come in and out here. Completely separate from everything else, and then the employee slash visitor parking is all in here, and in each bay we have. Sidewalks adjacent to the park, and we have crosswalks that lead you right to the building, again, this is not, these facilities are not busy, 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 but we've got sidewalks. Next to every park and bay to lead you safely to and from, and, and also around the drop off area. Around here, there's a sidewalk around the edge here.
Okay, so if there's no concerns, I'll move on.
I, I wondered if there was too much parking, you know?
We're gonna get to that.
Okay, yes, later on, alright.
Maybe.
Too much.
Um.
Um, all right, are they designed so vehicles leave the parking area and afford motion, I imagine everybody can back out from those parking spaces? And because I think you said it was like eighteen feet deep for the stalls and then twenty something.
Eighteen and a half, I think your.
Yeah.
Ordinance is kind of an odd one, so I think it's eighteen and a half, it's either eighteen and a half or nineteen, it's. Yeah, typically they're now by eighteen, probably, yeah.
And then the, the drive aisle itself is twenty, okay. I know we're gonna get to that, but, but, um. Uh, I think, does the, does proposed layout take into account onsite snow management, I think I saw along the both of those drives, there was. Snow. Um, and is each parking area landscaped to accommodate both parking and stormwater management? I, I see that you've got, are those retention ponds around, or?
So we have, our stormwater issue is actually off the edges, but these are bio-attention, so they're planted, uh. Planted stormwater areas, and then we've got enough width in the landscape and the sash, you could probably bring out the landscape and plant it, it's in the packet. So all these islands are designed to incorporate landscaping into the parking lot.
Um. Do the curved medians have a minimum curb to curb width of at least ten feet?
Yes.
Uh, are the curved landscaped islands sighted at the end of each parking aisle at intervals no greater than one island? Per every twenty spaces, including islands at the end of the aisles, what is, it's like thirty something per. Looping, so that means what, there's fifteen, maybe.
Yes.
Seventeen on each.
Um, one, one was on it.
I get eighteen on.
I think I saw one was thirty-five and one thirty-six. Yeah, so it's not, neither one is forty and. Uh. Parking stalls accessed from major interior travel lanes, are they immediately accessible from any public way? No, I don't think so. Um, is each parking space accessible without moving any other motor vehicles, there's no tandem parking in there. Uh, yeah, so stalls are nine feet wide, eighteen and a half feet deep, and, uh, access drive aisles are twenty-four feet wide, I think you said. Yeah, are four inch wide painted stripes proposed to delineate the parking stalls?
Yes.
Okay. Um, might the overhang of parked cars, one restrict traffic flow on adjacent. Through roads, two restrict pedestrian movement on adjacent walkways, or three damaged landscape materials. That is, if those, if any of those might be the case, then bumpers are required. I know, you're looking at me like I'm crazy, I didn't write this, I didn't write these ordinances.
You mentioned that later.
Um.
What we typically do when we have perpendicular path, and we, we don't like putting wheel stops in, we make the sidewalk six feet wide, so if you overhang it, you've always got eight. The eight at the back of the sidewalk. Makes it six feet wide, yeah.
Yeah, that, all right, so then the number of parking, um, the off-street. Parking should be brought, okay, this is, so there's seventy rooms that are proposed, I believe, right, and this gets into. What the, uh, uh, so the minimum requirement for nursing homes, which is like, I think the closest use that I could find in the site plan review. Is one-third per room. So seventy rooms would require at least twenty-four parking spaces. So now, my, what I see is seventy-one parking spaces are proposed, so the minimum is clearly, I, I, that's up to you, whether it's clearly met or not, but. Twenty-four is required, seventy-one is proposed, uh, including five handicap. Uh, spaces, so this is about three, it's basically one per room, one space.
And that, and the reason behind that, and I know people have started pushing now towards maximum number of parking spaces, and obviously parking spaces cost money, so. We're not in the business of putting in parking spaces that we don't think have been used, these gentlemen have a number of these facilities that are the same size, and one for bed. And you probably recall, we had this discussion last time around, one per bed is what works. And makes these facilities operate, and also you look at where we are in the site plan, there's no alternative, you're not like in town where you could park over the street or anything, so you gotta provide enough. And this is what works for these facilities on, on the experience of, of previous developments.
I'm just curious, do you, how, how full at like? Whatever the peak times might be, whether it's, I, I don't, when, well, for maybe, what is the peak time, is it during business hours?
The peak time is, the peak time for parking requirements would be right around that two thirty to three thirty period, we've got to change a shift where your heaviest staff shift is. Leaving and your second heaviest staff shift is coming onboard.
Right.
So you've got thirty to thirty-two, and then leaving and then twenty or so coming in.
Yeah.
And then you have special events that happen, and my forty years of doing twenty-five facilities, nobody's ever said we have too much parking, I can tell you that, it's always never enough.
Uh. And how many do residents tend to have cars?
No.
No.
Are residents allowed to have cars?
You could have a rare resident who had a car, but.
Yeah, but for the most part.
For the most part, no.
The parking is not for residents, it's for.
Staff and visitors, yeah.
You're gonna have a bicycle.
Sure, we do, yeah, we have, I don't know whether.
We're old.
Yeah.
Um.
It's very specific.
So, uh, are the proposed, then this is for the board, are the proposed pedestrian ways appropriate for the type and scale of development?
Yeah.
Um, do the pedestrian, do the proposed pedestrian ways connect the major building entrance with the parking areas and existing sidewalks? Um. I think you mentioned the. Or the internal walkways distinguished from driving surfaces, I would, I know you've got sidewalks separate from the parking lot areas and. Any sort of losses, you've got.
Most of them are separated, um, but all these sidewalks are actually congregate, so the only. So the only, the only place where we have the flush is at the drop off area and that's going from asphalt to concrete.
And you had heated crosswalks in there as well, where they grow from one to the other, you said?
Yeah.
And the sidewalk going in that, I guess I'm gonna say the main entrance was asphalt, I believe, that goes out to Piper Mill?
Uh, yes, this one is asphalt and again it's curved.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, um. Alright, so. This is, I, I'm not gonna read the standard, but in summary, it says, uh, does the proposed pedestrian network link the project with residential recreational and commercial facilities? Does the proposed pedestrian network link the project to schools, bus stop, and existing sidewalks in the neighborhood? Does the proposed pedestrian network link the project with parks, open space? On an agent adjacent site or amenities or other amenities, so. One that I think is particularly relevant is, do you have? Next, right next to it is Coastal Rivers, is there any comment you are proposing or providing to that?
No, that, actually that portion of road after we get past the apartments, uh, is an easement for the sewer district. And that's down to sixteen feet wide down there. It's, the road width is really only suitable for one-way traffic. So I'm not sure you need a separate pedestrian sidewalk on that road. It doesn't seem, it, you, it would look awfully forward, but no, if you put a sidewalk on a road that built up of a land trust. Frankly, it's, it's a lot of asphalt, maybe pretty unnecessary asphalt.
So, I, I, this is mainly for, for my clarification, I, I see where the. The road, I guess, ends there at the frontage of. I assume like what I'm gonna call a lot too, that you're not really addressing now, that's where. As soon as you cross that line, the sewer district owns from there.
I don't think the sewer district owns it, in fact, uh. I'm not clear who owns it, it's a, they have an easement over it, it's fifty feet wide, I do know that.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether it's the landowner that's the next one up from the rivers association or. The apartments, but I can't, I don't think it's the apartments, so I think it may be the landowner that, once you go around the corner to the sewer plant. After the river association land ends, there's a property on in there. And that, I think was the original property on both sides of that lane.
Well, between. Right next to the original Casner Creek property. Right, right adjacent to where the original, rather than not parcel. I mean.
So the big, the big clipper ship parcel that was like a hundred acres that was divided and eighty went to the river association. That ends kind of after you go around the corner on the, there's a property on the left there.
They bought that.
Oh, they bought that? So I think, so they, then they may have the ownership of the road at this point, because that's the nearest I can find. I know, I don't know for certain who owns, who owns, I know the sewer district has a fifty foot wide easement over it.
I mean, you should know who owns the road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna look into that, and you think? Who might own it? Do you think the Coastal Rivers owns it?
Coastal Rivers bought the parcel up.
Yeah.
On that side.
So. They could potentially own.
I can't imagine it.
You don't think they are, but.
Wasn't the, um. Housing Development, they talked about having coming out on that road up above the turn, so they may have it too, but we're gonna have to figure out who that is, but.
You hear from the Ledgewood Court ex- extension.
Correct, remember, because he talked about coming out the backside of that and coming back into the road, so I assumed that they owned right up along that road anyway, because they, that piece of land is theirs. We walked it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, they own, I, I'll, I'll look into it, because if it's not you all, then.
Oh, it's. At that point in time, is it actually pertinent?
No, that's, you know, the only reason is because one of the standards is, um. You know, this pedestrian network must.
It really isn't a pedestrian network.
It asks about.
There's no sidewalks down there, there's nothing, there is no pedestrian network.
Yeah.
So it's really a moot point.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, in one, I think is, is fair. And, and a lot of this, if it's. It's up to you all, well, it's not so much that it's up to you if the standard is. Um, it's up to you if it's applicable, it's not up to you if it's relevant, so if you're saying like, oh, there's no, no. Network or this isn't, uh, you know, a relevant amenity or something like, that's fine, but I just wanna make sure, we, we gotta document that, so that.
Well, I mean, it's actually. The, the developer owner of this parcel kind of will be responsible.
That would seem to make sense.
Whatever happens.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't ignore anything so that.
Keep going.
If there's an approval, that someone doesn't come back and say like, you know, here's this standard, you didn't. So. Yeah. So I said, yeah, this property is not located along any road designated by a town, adopted town plan for as far as like connecting to. The sidewalks and stuff, okay, um. Did you, will the proposed development impose a burden on any existing storm drains? Are you expecting any, um, stormwater impact off-site, or are you essentially retaining? Everything onsite?
The pre and post, the post is always low.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't even know if there is any. Are there any, well, there's what, that one culvert that goes underneath Piper Mills?
Way down, yeah.
That's, you know, towards School Street.
But all this water is gonna be dealt with, kind of in small localized. Um, low impact of development swales and things like that.
And the, the problem you're talking about is actually upstream of where the site drains to.
Oh, because it'll.
Down the hill, but it's upstream.
Right.
It all drains towards the west.
The other way.
And that's going east-west on the road.
And what, there's another one that's down Piper Mills as well?
Uh, there's, I believe.
It's not, it's not on your property, I just, if you.
Yeah.
I believe there's one way down by the corner, down here, it kind of pokes under the road, because there's a low point down here, and I think there's one at post end.
There is.
That's, we're not affected in that. We drain in that.
You drain that, yeah, okay. That's, that's, that's helpful for me, thank you. Alright, and. Will the proposed development impose a burden on any existing public utilities? Three-phase power and fiber optic is private, I can't imagine you're gonna overburden either of those, but.
Well, it's right on the street, overhead, just, just renewed by sewer district.
What's that, the?
Three phases overhead.
Okay.
Used to be on the ground and then all sorts of issues, but they're sort of just putting in new work.
Okay. Okay, um. Oh, yeah, yeah, you mentioned that. Um, GSP, I. The letter that you got from them is in there. Can we get an updated one from them, because it's two years old now?
Yeah.
And I just, yeah, I can't imagine it's a problem, but. If anybody came back, you know.
You wanna buy it again?
Yeah, uh, yes, that's, I'm gonna, well, I need to, I'm going to share this with, uh. No, I'm wrong. Yes, thank you, the fire chief. Um, and I met with him not long ago about how to incorporate him into the process, which we can discuss at some point. Uh, alright, so, and there is a. The board may require the applicant to commit, complete a public facilities impact study, so my question is, are the results of a public impact study necessary to adequately review this application?
Little retail operation.
It is not. But this is just. Board may require, no, okay, that's, that's fine. And then, again, like, you don't need to make a decision, that's a question, so. At some point, I'm gonna need to say, yes, the board, or no, the board said that they did, it wasn't necessary, so we're not requiring. Um, and what I, I can tell you what the, the standard is, the board may require the applicant to complete a public facilities impact study or retain a consultant. Pursuant to the provisions of one oh two five D to conduct such a study if it determines the results of such a study are necessary to adequately review the application. This is all under, and you didn't, you said, okay. Um, alright, so that's existing public utilities and services, water quality. Oh, there's only. Uh, fuel storage, where is fuel storage happening? And is it underground, I guess it's probably more.
Underground propane.
Underground, you say you are putting propane, but, uh, you are pretty probably underground, but it's, it's propane, um. Okay, so not petroleum tanks. Uh, okay, and where, where are those?
They're in the service area, so. Show on the plan, right?
Are they, okay. And what kind of review with DP did you need?
So this is an amendment of the site location permit that was issued from previous development, and that went in and was accepted August fifteenth.
And did you, have they? They accepted the amendment, so that's approved and you're good, they just accepted, yeah, okay. Okay. So. There is requirement that the town receive the approved permit. Before the application is deemed complete, do you have any idea what kind of timeline they are working on?
Yeah, I don't think we, the last time around, we certainly didn't have the permit, we had the permit. Because it's a condition of, of no permits, for, for being complete, so they're working on a. Seven, eight months.
So, if. If, uh. I'm, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll relook at the standard and make sure, but maybe it's a condition of approval type thing.
Certainly a condition of financing and doing the project, you can't finance it without DP approval, so, and. I think generally that's how, how we deal with it with these projects with towns.
Yeah, I mean, that seems, that seems reasonable. Yeah. I didn't write the ordinance, so.
If memory is shown correctly, I think that's what happened last time, was pending the DP.
Okay, yeah, I, I hope that is, I'm, I'm sure. Uh, is the board requiring peer review and endorsement of the stormwater plan and calculations by the Knox Lincoln Soil and Water Conservation District or qualified engineer? Have you been in touch with Knox and Lincoln County Soil and Water?
We did it last time, because it's getting reviewed by DP, stormwater engineers, so, I mean. Can those guys do as thorough as anybody and, and. Sometimes they'll, they'll have the soil and water district do the review for them, bridge equivalents, and I think, I think have stormwater engineers do better reviews.
Okay, so is the board requiring such a, that? Review and endorsement? Probably not.
I know there was concern by the, there was concern about the. Any, any impact on the, the drainage to the. You know. That little s- stream that goes into Casner Creek down there.
Yes, we went, we went through that last time, I think you asked all the questions.
But, but I think so, guys.
Yeah, I, I think you can be fairly confident, the standards that DP have, and I think to your point, the soil and water conservation district review are usually for things that don't have to go through DP, so you've got somebody, you've got. You met all their standards, in addition, I think the only one that you have that's extra is you ask us to look at the fifty-year storms, as well as two, ten, and twenty-five.
Well.
We met all those standards, and the treatment, their water quality treatment standards are. At the, you know, at the top notch in the state, so.
Just because there's so much more water coming down, precipitation events are much greater than they.
Yeah, they've, so they've, not to get on the side track, but they've, they've updated their rainfall standards somewhat, and I think when you see, when they do the updates, the stormwater norm, they're gonna incorporate. Some way of updating them periodically without having to go back for a big rule change, because they recognize that's happening.
Um, okay. There's a lot in, uh, stormwater management, uh, does the submitted stormwater management plan preserve existing natural runoff control features of the pre-development landscape?
All drained into the same places the drains do now, and, and all, when you read through the analysis, that's, in a nutshell, that's what we're doing, we're putting it all in the same directions. And all at pre-development rates, so same place, same floor, same point.
It actually was, like, probably the best. Plan we've ever seen to treat, to treat stormwater in such a diffuse way. You know, they really. They did a good job.
Uh, are adequate buffers proposed between snow storage sites and freshwater streams and wetlands? I, is that considered through your, your, um, stormwater management?
It is, because again, because we've compressed all the site inwards, all those snowstorm areas. So even the paved areas, so they'll all throw the light on the streams and the river courses and the waterfalls and they were.
Do you, do you have, uh, retention or retention ponds in the setback in the buffer areas? And I know it's, it kind of varies, some places it's fifteen, some places it's thirty feet, but.
Only here, and they're actually, they're actually on. On the other property, here, the other side of the line, none of these other ones are near the property lines.
But they're not ponds.
No, they're not, and that's, but. Again, people who write the ordinance, they.
And there's no fences around them, right?
No, 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 these are all planted, they're shallow, they're gonna kind of disappear into the, once they grow up, they kind of disappear into the landscape.
Okay. And this, I, I, has an erosion and sediment control plan been prepared in accordance with the main erosion and sediment control handbook for construction best management practices?
Yes, and you'll see that in your application, probably don't wanna read it, it's not that interesting, but it's another element that goes into the theme.
Okay.
Uh, so it's shown, it's shown on a couple of sheets on the plan set with details, but there's a whole narrative in there, I forget which sections it's in, but it's in your site plan.
Okay.
Packet, and it's also from the DP, same thing.
Great, great. Um, alright, so, uh, no, we already asked that. Already asked that. Is the proposed clearing of trees the minimum amount necessary to accommodate the proposed development? And does the final plan note the limit of proposed clearing of trees? Uh, does the final, does the plan limit the clearing of trees? To, I think that's it. Are you able to delineate where you're going to stop the clearing?
Yep, and it should be shown right on this plan here. Uh, you'll see the new tree line. In fact, that's the existing tree line, so this is the new tree line, right around the edge of grading. Right around the edge of grading, and all the way, we've boarded in as tight as we can, as tight as we can on this side, right up close to the road here. So you'll see that on your plans and.
Okay, so that is, that's shown. Designed to minimize availability from existing public roads? Is proposed development proximity to a ridgeline? If yes, does the design minimize or eliminate any adverse visual, visual impacts on the ridgeline? I know it's kind of at a peak, but is it at a ridgeline?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, then does the design minimize or eliminate any adverse visual impacts to the ridgeline?
Well, they, they try, they, it might be one story and. The, the shape of it, you know, and how the mass of it's kind of set back.
Okay, so we could say that it does minimize the visual.
Yes, they work to do that.
It does, and better than the last time.
Yeah, it's better than the last.
Well, we also, last time we went through this, we talked about, uh, screening this from the. School Street people, last week, go to Andrew's.
Yeah. The last.
And I believe that. Did we ever come to an actual decision about the, uh, type of trees we put in there?
Yeah, we talked about it.
I, I believe it was in there, plus, not only. Is it further back this time, but the vegetation has also grown up, as you mentioned earlier too, so I think it's gonna be. Better than what.
No, I think it's better already, yes, I agree. I just wanna make sure that we covered our bases on the.
You talked about it.
Tend to put in.
And you'll see on the landscape, that's in there, there's supplemental planting at the top of the slope.
Yeah.
Right in front of the. Right in front of the the service area, which is the area that was pointed out, has been the most sensitive last time there. But I'll say, I think the vegetation for down slopes is just gonna help with that as well, because that's grown up pretty hard.
And in that plan, it talks about what you're planting for trees?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, is the board requiring the preservation of any existing large trees, the replacement of trees and vegetation and graded con- Yeah, great contours on the landscape. I know you mentioned one large tree. But are there other large trees on the site that are particularly? Uh, oh, uh, so historic and archaeological resources, you mentioned correspondence with main historic preservation, you provided those. Did you, do you have correspondence with the tribal historic preservation? Officers?
Yep, and that was all submitted with the army corps engineers.
Okay, so that is. Wasn't sure if that was uh Indian, Indian tribes, okay. All right, good. Building, excavation, sewage disposal. Capacity serve, okay, and then buffer areas, I gotta just go through that whole. Large scale development. Do you want to go through large scale development right now? We've got plenty that we. I know we need to go through. I'm happy to keep going, but. It's quarter day.
When we get somebody else.
Oh, we got someone else. So I'm happy to go through this, uh, let me just see if there was. Anything I wanted some. All right, yeah, there's some stuff in here, but I'm hopefully what I will try to do is go through this, get answers, and then. You can bring it back to the board, assuming that's all right with you, can bring it back to the board at the next meeting. Um, go through the kind of formal. You know, up down votes on anything, and then potentially, uh, if all the questions are answered. Now. You all. Did uh notice a butters?
Mm hmm.
Did you put it in the newspaper?
Uh, I think so, I I honestly can't remember exactly what we did, it seemed like.
Yeah. Okay, because I know this, that I don't think that we put it on our website or like in the town office and there, so. Um, I just want to make sure that we check all the boxes for uh. Noticed public here.
Yeah.
So we can do that at the next one, uh, you know, for next month's meeting. Um.
What date is that?
Uh, I think it's the twelfth, let's think it's November twelve.
We got really often.
Yes.
It is specifically because of the election.
Yeah, which is a Tuesday. Because Veterans Day is Monday.
You know what they have to say.
Any neighbors to this project here?
Did did the board want to see the site again before that meeting?
I'm very familiar with that site, do any of you guys want to say it? I've got cameras on there, believe me.
Okay, um, so if that's.
Yeah.
Then we'll we'll do the public hearing at the next meeting. I don't see why we, hopefully, we can get to a vote. Um, but that's, we gotta see how that how the meeting goes and what other information, but I will try to. Be in touch with. Document all of the conversation we had here and um. Is any other information that? Pumps up.
To send this list.
So are they gonna have a public hearing?
Yeah, yes, I've been next. Yes, I'm I'll I'll make sure it goes in the newspaper and then.
Okay.
Goes on, goes on uh. For the newspaper and making sure it goes up here, yes. I'll double check. With. With a butters, if you've already noticed um. I I think we can kind of carry it over from this meeting. If there's anybody, there there apparently there's nobody from the public here now. Anybody is watching and um. You know, we're gonna have the public hearing on this at the next meeting. Uh.
Also, I'll make sure I send you what we sent out, so we can't for the mood, I'll miss anything.
That's, yeah, I I know I saw.
We received, we did, we did the main and received three.
Yes.
Obviously, but what it said, but.
Um, okay, but yeah, well. I could know, we'll make sure we nail down the public notice and public hearing and that. We'll pick it up at the next meeting.
We folks have a short time once you get all crew.
Timeline.
For construction.
Starting construction.
Starting construction.
Uh, next week, um, April one.
April. April would be when you want to start constructing. Okay. I'm.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. Yeah, so. I'll just let you all, I I would just say. I spent a lot of time just going through and figuring out what the standards were that needed to be met.
Yeah.
That there there's some. Cleaning up that I think we can do with that. Um. And especially just nailing down like applicability, because I think there's a lot of standards in this and also in the subdivision, which. Um. I was going through for the next application. It's like, it's a lot of stuff that it's not clear whether it, it's obviously, it's it's ob- it's fairly obvious that it's not applicable, but it doesn't say that. So it's like, all right, well, this is all applicable.
Well, like, like one of their um. Waiver requests is for um. Changes in the the width of the sidewalk. Remember, we in our standards, it's, we require like, is it?
It was like eight feet, yeah.
Which is crazy.
Yeah.
In a sense, you know, sometimes.
It's like it makes it makes sense downtown maybe, but all right, but that's, yes, so that's, I just wanted to mention that the like. I have been very busy, but also like a a considerable amount of time went into just getting the findings of facts to a point where. I was like, here's what the question is that needs to be answered. Because, you know, there's kind of like paragraphs and there's the purpose is kind of mashed in with the standard, that's also mashed in with whether it's applicable, so. I'd like to work on that, but.
Says a lot more base codes.
All right. The next thing maybe is. Subdivision for um.
Yeah, uh, let's see, the ninety two Woods Lane Thomas subdivision amendment application.
Representing uh Mister Mark. Hopefully you each have.
I, I don't care, I would. I mean, I'll give it back to you, but I'd like to see it.
Right now, I included the um. Digital, you originally planned, and they had that digitally. Just one of one minor. Thing is uh. Is uh, I'm good, Mike, I get. Dan?
Yeah, thanks.
Um, is the. The one thing is a proposed. A line that will split the lot. Um.
So. This. Is. You wanna I give a overview?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, yeah. Mister Thomas owns a lot three in Pine Cove State Subdivision. Um, he would like to divide it into lot three and lot three C. Uh, which would have indicated on the plan. Um. And uh. Yeah, that that about sums it up.
It it, I know, it is fairly straightforward, so the current law.
This is a lot three.
This is. The the current lot that's to be divided is. This, this line is not, doesn't exist currently. Yeah.
Way around Patty Stevens.
Yeah, and.
So what he wants to do is just cut this off.
Yes.
What's the size of that?
Uh, three point five nine acres.
And that, I I did, I have one. One possible problem.
Okay.
Um. And I mean, then I think the solution is probably fairly easy though. Um. The one of the things that I noticed was on the near the water, you've got two cottages down there.
Mm hmm.
What's in those cottages?
I do not know. I, yeah.
Now, and the reason I ask is I see that there are two. Leach fields over there.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and the only, so the issue is if. Both of those cottages qualify as dwelling units, like there's a bathroom and.
Sure.
Then you need, you basically need two acres. You need four acres for that front lot.
Okay.
And the and the way that it's cut now, you're you're not, you're not meeting it. Um, but I know you've got. You, there's enough space, there's enough land here to get.
Mm hmm.
You know, to 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 divide another lot, a lot off. In the back there, that's at least two acres and or.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the nature of of those cottages.
And that's, so that's the only thing that that I found out, I realized this. Right, not long, I went after I spoke with you, right, because you spoke earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, when I was going through, it was it was probably the last thing that I found as I was going through this, so. Um. Yeah, so uh. So I think that's the, that's gonna be the issue, and it just is gonna be a how to divide the lot so that the front lot still has. It needs eighty thousand square feet per dwelling unit.
And what's the definite, what what defines a dwelling unit?
It's basically gonna be, does it have a bathroom? And the kitchen.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so and that's, you know, it's, I know it says cottage, and so one of them. Really, if it has, if it has a bathroom, then it's probably gonna be a dwelling unit. Um. Yeah.
So th- this lot has this weird little strip all around there?
Yes.
Without a road and.
That's that's owned by, uh, that's part of lot three. It's I I I have the original, I have the original um. Subdivision here, if you'd like to take a look at that as well.
Uh, that, you shared that digitally, yes?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Because I, and I shared that with you.
I think I saw that, and did it say on it that no, none of the lot should be, shall be. Subdivided?
Um, lots, uh, one, one A, two, and uh, three A and three B, so lot three is still able to be subdivided.
Yeah.
There's a few other lots within the subdivision that aren't allowed to be subdivided, but lot three is.
I think it was. But basically, it's the only one in there.
It can't.
Yeah, I think lot three was like the remainder out of the, out of the other lots that were created.
Yeah.
Don't, don't, don't people generally try to avoid weirdly shaped lots like this, I mean?
They do, and there is, there's some standards about like the lot and with. Um, these are, you know, interesting. We should lots. But. I I I mean, we can look at this at like specific, um. Because I said, there are a couple.
Well, the shape of a lot really had nothing to do with us.
No, there is, there is.
There are standards.
There is a standard.
Spaghetti sh- spaghetti lots, but this is.
How long has this existed?
Yeah. Oh, well, that, yeah. And and honestly, the, I think what I said in in here was. The shape of, this is before I realized, like, that's kind of a weird. It's an obvious place to cut this, but it's, we have now a lot area issue.
Hmm.
But these lots are more normal, normal shape than the existing lot that they're dividing. You know, the 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 one, currently, it's like a barbell kind of thing. And when they divide it, it'll just, this one will be kind of long and skinny, uh, although this over here is is peculiar, but. That, I mean, this is ki- this is almost as a right of way, I mean, not really much you can do with that. Back there is not an unusual shape.
This is the road, the gravel road goes along here.
Yes.
And to access this lot.
Yeah, there there was, uh, I don't know where it is right now, but there was something about lot shape, but. I don't know if it's.
There, there is a length and width ratio, um, I think it's in relation to shore, I've only seen it in relation to shore frontage though.
Shoreland.
Yeah.
Zoning lots.
And you, I know. What is the frontage along shoreline? You've got more than two hundred feet.
Two fifth, they're just under two fifty.
Yeah, so you're good, you're good with with that, it. And I don't. Fine.
Think you're right about dwelling unit though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I I don't know what's what's in them, I guess what I would say is. If, if it turns out that they are not dwelling units.
Okay.
Just needs something that, I don't, you need to prove that, because I think it's reasonable for the planning board to say.
Have separate driveways.
You know, you see two buildings on here that's just. They actually. Assumption could be.
Separate driveways too.
Yeah, so I think it's fair to assume that they're dwelling units, if they're not, then you just gotta, then you'd have to.
Yeah.
burden would be on you to prove that.
Okay.
And if they are, again, I I don't think it's, I don't think it precludes you from dividing, it's just, you gotta figure out how to make that front lot. Uh, hundred and sixty thousand square feet, it has, it's eighty thousand square feet per dwelling unit.
Okay.
Which I don't think you're not like terribly far off, it's basically. You need two acres per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
It's less, but.
So that would have. It'd have to be on sporting, but.
Right. Right, which right now, what is it, it's two, two and a half, so you gotta figure out how to get like.
They're extended this way down here like that. More like that.
Nice.
Um.
I hope that.
I think.
I think it's ridiculous too, I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah, just.
I mean, I can't.
Right.
What was that subdivision?
Oh, it's pretty, it's, uh, let's see, that was uh, two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four.
Who did it? Uh, Main Coast Surveying Rod Craves.
But who, 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 who's?
Wonder what the thought process behind. Making that lot like that was.
Yeah.
Unless they wanted to make sure they owned the road, but they don't, because the road is not enclosed by.
That's right.
Within here, you know what I mean?
I think they wanted to make sure that they could.
Yeah, that they could possibly.
They could if they had to.
Yeah.
That could be the answer right there.
Mm hmm.
Because that would take them all away.
Um, there, I was, I was fully expecting that they would review this, um. And that it might be approvable tonight, but I don't think it is right now, which, um. But since you're here, are there any other issues that the planning board sees that, um? We. Need to address, I did not, did not say that a public hearing was gonna be required for this. Um, it's just a pretty minor subdivision uh amendment.
Do they, so there's no building on this?
No.
At all.
No.
Yes, there is a building on that.
But have these guys been notified?
Um, actually, I should, I should mention that the the woman who owns lot B. Um, who I forget her name, she came in and was just asking like, oh, what's going on with it? I don't know if he's been in touch with you, she was basically wanted to buy that lot.
Yes, I've actually, five of my clients been in touch with her.
Right, so.
Yeah.
She knew, um. But again, it wasn't like a, there's no public notice.
I I, we we did send out, um, certified.
Oh, that's right, you did.
To the butters, yeah.
In our pocket of who they sent them to.
Yeah, yeah, I I did, I shared, anything that you sent me, I shared with the board, but.
Yep.
Uh. See, um. There are some conditions of approval that just. Come from the ordinance. Um.
Is it past Lake Hurst or before Lake Hurst? Is this before Lake Hurst, you know, on on the edge of the road?
There any reason, um, like I was mentioning be- before, the subdivision ordinance talks about. Foster phosphorus control and impact on groundwater quality, is there any reason to? To think that this was gonna have any negative or any impact on groundwater, I mean, it's. Even the way that I looked at this is what what they're doing is just drawing a line, but even if you assume that that back lot may get sold and developed. I assume it's gonna be, yeah, and I think it would be reasonable to assume that it would be developed, but it's probably gonna be developed as a house, I mean, the the. Uses, it's still gonna have to conform with all the other, so. When you go through this, there's a lot of like groundwater and is it, you know, and I I just wanna get the board's. Feeling on uh, how.
I mean, it shouldn't be an issue on groundwater, providing everything's done legally and practice. Pathetic system should be functional.
Right.
Should not affect groundwater, fortress control, you're far enough back in the dirt, you don't have to worry about it, it's not a problem. You know, phosphor control really is situated with, you know, adjacent to the water bodies, so I don't see any issue with either one of those.
And they they've done some soil test pits, I guess.
Yes.
Recent, just showing that you could put a septic.
The septic hood, okay.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's what I figured, I just wanted to know how, you know, if if you all wanted to, um. Wanted any information or or demonstration that those are met, um. So there are a couple, let me get through the conditions, these are just proposed after going through the. Ordinance, um. Okay, I don't, I don't know that the, that the town has to, but, um. You wanna include a condition that the lots can't be divided further after this, or leave that up to the subdivision and the property owner, and I can't, I mean. It's gonna be hard with the existing zone in, but.
Subdivided again.
Yeah, so that's.
The time you've done making this lot big enough, when I shrink this one down, you're not gonna be able to do it.
That's kinda what I thought, but I wanted to just put it out there.
Yeah, I hear you.
I I don't get to make decisions, um, as a condition of approval, permanent monument should be set at both ends of the. The proposed new lot line, maybe our pins already, they may already be.
Yes, we've we've already, we've set a rod.
You did.
Uh, at that, that subtle, that most subtly corner there.
So, um, but when this, yeah, uh, when this gets redrawn, assuming. The ordinance does require like a pin gets set at corners.
Yeah.
So.
Not a problem.
Let me see, as a condition of approval, any newer reconstructed driveways on lot three or three C should be constructed. And maintained to prevent water or runoff from reaching the paved or traveled portion of Woods Lane. That was just a standard that I, I don't know. Being that you don't know where the new driveway is gonna go, or that, that's why I say it's just make it a condition of approval and. That way, when it gets built.
Remember that, so I'll forget it.
Yeah, well, at least it'll be written somewhere, well, we we would be, we can write it on. We can have it written on the subdivision plan, so that when it's registered, it just shows up there. Um, as a condition of approval, uh, no septic disposal system. Um, uh, no septic disposal system on lot three or lot three C will be allowed in soil. Rated poor or very poor for such purposes by the main plumbing code. I I, that again is something that's in the subdivision ordinance. That you're not allowed to have, um, septic and poor or very poor soil. I don't think, yeah, I know, I don't think you, but, um, as a condition of approval, that's a. You already did soil test pits, right, on at least on.
On three C, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then the last one is just that. We'll get, it's about. Getting a copy for the planning board to sign and maybe like forty five days or something, and then, um. It can all happen faster, but at least within forty five days, you gotta give us an approved plan for the planning board to sign, that then you can take. And submit to the registry of deeds within sixty days, and.
Sure.
If you don't do that, then the approvals void. Those are the conditions that I've got that are approved, again. Is there anything else so that, I my assumption is that you can make whatever adjustments, get this back, and we can. Probably get it on for the next planning board agenda.
Okay.
Any issues with that, I will share with with you the updated findings of fact for this, and if you find any issues. But if the planning board doesn't have any other issues, then.
So is there a road association, or how how do all the landowners deal with the road?
Um, I believe there's a road association, um, I don't know for certain off the top of my head.
You know, I didn't see any requirements relating to road associations in our subdivision ordinance.
There aren't any.
Yeah. And not that the there should be, I just as as you mentioned it, and it's like, never, didn't even come up on my.
It's often a point of contention.
Yep. Okay. I think it's the only other, the only issue I see that needs correcting is the area of that front lot.
Okay.
I think, unless there's.
I think they'll do.
Yeah.
Well, that's about it.
Alright.
Well, I wish I could have caught that earlier and saved you the trip, but.
That's a great. Alright. Alright, thank you.
Sorry, I had to sit for a long meeting to that.
Okay, the only other things I wanted to just put on your radar is, um. I got a request for a permit extension from Atlantic, US Route One, the solar PV development. They just wanna extend, they just want another extension, now this would be the second one, and. Something really clear in the ordinance that like we have to or not. What I would say is, we should, the board should think about like. What should an applicant show, I mean, getting sent for the first year, you know, maybe isn't that crazy? Again, once you go again now, like, why should the board, or why shouldn't the board be extending things? Cuz I think you wanna have a reason that you go either way, um.
I thought we had something in there, I don't know if it was for the solar array, but it was for another project that. We weren't gonna let them come back unless they represented the, there there was, there's something in there, and I can't remember.
I think that was.
Somebody else's brain, too.
And not Clipper Ship, uh, Ledgewood, did we do with them?
No, we just let them, that was that for an extension.
I am, yes, it was Rising Tide.
Oh, this was before me, this was before I.
Yes, yes, so there was something about how many times they could come back before we were just like, no.
Resubmit.
You re- need to resubmit the whole thing.
Yeah.
What's the holdup for the solar?
I I don't know, my guess, I'm I'm seeing this, they are proposing a four point. Nine five megawatt AC solar vote, quote unquote, anyway. Though, there's been a couple of projects in Newcastle that came back and scaled their projects back. They were over one megawatt, um, and there's some kind of studies that CMP needs to do. That you're essentially exempt if you're under one megawatt, so my guess is, I think there was two projects that came back and said. We wanna scale back, can you approve this change that they can basically then get underneath the CMP requirement? This is pretty big, so scale back from five to one, or less than one would be. Not insignificant, so I don't know, that's just a guess that that might.
Half in, half in, I'm no more.
Which, yeah, I'm sure doesn't make it any. We don't have to, we don't have to make any, um. Decision on this. Unless, are you Sarah Huston?
Sarah, but not Sarah Huston.
Are you, are, is that you?
This is not me.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't actually, I I don't know if I came to the wrong meeting, I'm new to meetings, I thought there was a public. Thing at the beginning of each meeting, so all I want is a vendor's license. And, uh, I think I have to actually apply for it first and then come to the next meeting.
It's select board.
The selectmen's, oh.
Yes, which I can, I'll tell you one.
It's nice to know what's going on in Denver, Georgia.
What up, you fun?
I think I missed it, I think it was on the fourth, first selectment, so it's another month away.
No.
The sixteenth is the next one, they meet twice, yes.
And it's at a different time, it's at.
Earlier, it's at five thirty, yeah.
So the sixteen?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, and.
And get on the agenda.
And vendor's license.
Downloaded the application, I figured it, once I got here, that I probably should pass it in and pay the permit fee and all of that, and then they put me on the agenda.
Yeah, probably.
You could also talk to the clerks about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's I would, I would call tomorrow.
Yeah.
And either, either one of the clerks will be able to help you, or Andy Doors, the, um. Town manager, and he, he's kind of wrangles the select board.
Great, like Michael Rambles does.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you, it was kind of a cool meeting, never been to one before.
Good, well, welcome.
Sorry, it just occurred to me that, that, cuz they they want it to be on tonight's agenda, this, um, solar panel. Uh, solar farm, anyway, I just wanted to put that on your radar, again, no decision needs to be made today. Um, the other thing which I think I mentioned, I wanted to have a, I was gonna redo the public hearing for the land use ordinance updates. Um, just to, you know, belt and suspenders kind of thing. Uh, and then I spoke with the attorney, and they had a couple of changes they wanted me to make to the. Those changes to the land use ordinance, so we're gonna renotice that, I don't know if we're getting any new turnout, but, um, try and do that at the next. Possibly the next meeting. I think I mentioned, is there significant, uh, opposition to having a, just a separate meeting for? Um, I think we have to do a public here for the comp plan, we gotta do a public here for the land use ordinance. Maybe we just wanna move all the public hearings off to a separate meeting.
I don't think you'd be able to do it, plus have two other.
That's why I.
Things on our next one.
Mentioned it. I mean, I I'm imagining that, uh.
Right.
Yeah.
A great one.
So in Bangor Bank, aren't they?
They haven't submitted anything yet.
Bangor City's bank.
That's I.
I think they have.
So.
When are you thinking of doing that, maybe?
Well, that would be the next question, um, it gets hard, I think, maybe we could do it. Though.
You could do it the following week, I suppose.
Yeah, um.
Get it over with.
Uh, geez, um. We could, we could try and do it on.
I told them.
I'll have to see, I I, I think Newcastle is scheduling a meeting on the eighteenth or nineteenth. Whichever day they don't pick, it's Monday or Tuesday, whichever they date, they don't pick, or they haven't picked, um, did that work for you?
Yeah, find out.
Of November, so it'll be November eighteenth or nineteenth.
I think every day is.
It's, I, yeah. What's that?
Have to be after dark.
Yeah, I was thinking five thirty, six o'clock.
Yeah.
Five thirty, be good, get it over with.
That's, okay.
Yeah, good, good to you guys. For a sec.
I'm gonna, I just gotta check, um.
He just woke me funny, what time you want?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, the eighteenth, nineteenth, the only, I just, the only thing I wanna check is, we gotta make sure that it's. Um, that I have enough time to notice it, which I I don't think should be an issue, but that we have enough time before the next select board meeting, so that. We can, they can set the agenda and do their public notice and all of that.
Don't we have to have a public hearing, do you say tonight, we have to have a public hearing on the Clipper Ship?
Yeah, that's.
That have to be the same night?
No, no, well, we'll, I'm gonna notice that for that, for the, the, the next meeting.
Right, so that'll be the same night.
Not.
Not, I'm not the same night as the eighteen, nine, same night as our meeting.
Yeah, oh, yes, 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 that's, that's my intention, so let me, I will. Try and nail all of this down and then follow up with you and confirm. Um, okay, so.
You see.
That's all I got, so whatever you, whatever else, whatever.
You done for the rest of your life?
No, I'm just, just right now, you can stop me, and.
Alright, Mike, stop, then, go ahead, stop.
I am, I'm, I'm set.
I make motion.
Well, no, you make it.
What motion? Or do you wanna make it?
No, I can't make a motion.
I'd like to make motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, although, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.